Lights are green.
Lights are green.
We just got to public comment. Do you have any public comment for council? We just got to public comment. Do you have any public comment for council? When that clock strikes thirty, we will go ahead and get started.
Hold on, it's out there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, all right. We are not hearing of any public comment in the room. Oh, all right. We are not hearing of any public comment in the room. So that will bring us to the core of today's special meeting agenda. So that will bring us to the core of today's special meeting agenda. This evening, we'd like to cover planned reviews of city administrator and department heads. This evening, we'd like to cover planned reviews of city administrator and department heads. All right, clock has struck thirty. Katie, if we're good on AV, we will go ahead and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Council, just a couple of things for you to consider. Council, just a couple of things for you to consider. City Administrator Blackburn will be the focus on the review. City Administrator Blackburn will be the focus on the review.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
And you should have received information related to the aggregate review findings and the associated comments beyond the ratings And you should have received information related to the aggregate review findings and the associated comments beyond the ratings
one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
across the categories in the review form. across the categories in the review form. That will be the focus for the broader department head mention. That will be the focus for the broader department head mention. Good evening to council and to those that are attending virtually, since we do not have any public present in the chambers. There will be no other department head reviews performed, but it was included on the agenda in case we want to check in on the review process There will be no other department head reviews performed, but it was included on the agenda in case we want to check in on the review process for those other department heads, obviously according to the resolution by council. for those other department heads, obviously according to the resolution by council. I'd like to welcome everybody to the special meeting of City Council with the public notice agenda that we will follow. City Administrator Blackburn, I believe you've requested a closed meeting. City Administrator Blackburn, I believe you've requested a closed meeting.
Yes. Yes.
And with that, Katie, I will have you call roll. So City Administrator Blackburn is requesting a closed meeting for his review. So City Administrator Blackburn is requesting a closed meeting for his review.
Schumate.
Here.
Cuts.
Here.
So council, we need a motion to enter closed session according to the ability for any review requested to be performed in a closed capacity. So council, we need a motion to enter closed session according to the ability for any review requested to be performed in a closed capacity.
McNabb.
Here.
Mulner.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
Walden.
Wood.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to excuse absent Councilmember Walden? So council, is there a motion to enter closed session for the review of City Administrator Blackburn? So council, is there a motion to enter closed session for the review of City Administrator Blackburn?
Second.
Second by Mulner. Any discussion? Clerk Tomasic, whenever you're ready, will have you call roll on the motion to excuse Councilmember Walden.
Make that motion. Make that motion.
Second. Second.
Motion by Mulner, second by Valentine. Any discussion? Motion by Mulner, second by Valentine. Any discussion?
Axe.
Yes.
McNabb.
Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll. Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll.
Yes.
Mulner.
Yes.
McNabb. McNabb. Schumate.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Mulner. Mulner. Valentine.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Wood. Schumate. Schumate.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Cuts. Valentine. Valentine.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Wood. Wood.
Okay, that motion is carried. So this time, we will enter closed session.
Yes. Yes.
Cuts. Cuts.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, that motion is carried. So this time, we will enter closed session. Okay, that motion is carried. So this time, we will enter closed session. Council, if you could just turn your mics from green to off. Council, if you could just turn your mics from green to off. Council, if you could just turn your mics from green to off. Members of public, broadcast will still continue when we come back from closed session. Members of public, broadcast will still continue when we come back from closed session. Members of public, broadcast will still continue when we come back from closed session. You will see us re-enter chambers and then continue with the session today. You will see us re-enter chambers and then continue with the session today. You will see us re-enter chambers and then continue with the session today. Council, you ready to head upstairs? Council, you ready to head upstairs? Council, you ready to head upstairs? Councilwoman Valentine, we're going to go up to the conference room just so that the AV can remain on, so there's no disruption. Councilwoman Valentine, we're going to go up to the conference room just so that the AV can remain on, so there's no disruption. Councilwoman Valentine, we're going to go up to the conference room just so that the AV can remain on, so there's no disruption.
Is that, is that the agenda? Is that, is that the agenda? Is that, is that the agenda?
Yeah, that's the agenda. Yeah, that's the agenda. Yeah, that's the agenda.
No. Awesome. Awesome. No. No.
No copies either. No copies either. No copies either.
Hi, Katie. Hi, Katie. Hi, Katie.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
I'm tired. I'm tired. I'm tired.
I'm tired, but I'm probably not for the same reason you are. I'm tired, but I'm probably not for the same reason you are. I'm tired, but I'm probably not for the same reason you are. Fifty percent. Fifty percent. Fifty percent. Fifty percent I don't want to go. Fifty percent I don't want to go. Fifty percent I don't want to go.
Good. 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 I had a half-ass workout this morning and... I had a half-ass workout this morning and... I had a half-ass workout this morning and...
You look pretty diligent though. You look pretty diligent though. You look pretty diligent though.
You know, I showed up. You know, I showed up. You know, I showed up.
Well, you know, I got to tell you, that's half the battle. Well, you know, I got to tell you, that's half the battle. Well, you know, I got to tell you, that's half the battle.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to leave this open in case you want to entertain me while the light show up. I'm going to leave this open in case you want to entertain me while the light show up. I'm going to leave this open in case you want to entertain me while the light show up.
Maybe look to the second floor. Like, is it not impressed?
Well, hello?
Hello.
Right here, doc? Yes, how can I help you with your...
Well, the problem is, I did a foolish thing. I went deep and stepped out in the barrel of hanging and recycled.
Yeah.
And I saw something, well, I grabbed it. And, and I did it in such fashion and fell on the ground and got wet. But, it also had knowledgeable information on it, too, that had been put in there. So, I said, okay, if I go in there and try and see if I can pull some of that out. I went by the policeman.
You didn't stop him?
There's nobody said, yeah.
Your son's home?
Yeah, but he's so pissed off at me right now.
Well, you don't want him to care.
Huh?
You don't want him, how can you...
Well, no, but it's his, his information and...
Well, if he, if he doesn't care, then leave it in there.
I care.
Yeah, but you're, you're not...
It's got his name, his information on it. He's going through retirement.
Yeah, I understand that, but if you told him, I mean, seriously for your health and safety, you don't want... Because you're gonna involve other people in case you get stuck in there. That, that would be the worst thing and the most non-intelligent thing to do.
Well, I'm ready for that. Well, I knew what I'm gonna tell you. Somebody just reached up and said, they were talking about, and I thought we were rejoicing some of the, uh... Pavements, people, uh, so, uh... Uh, some men, but, but...
National.
And I said, somebody said, by the bridge. I said, by the bridge? My dad's a mess.
No.
I didn't, I didn't stay because by this time I was a little angry, uh...
Well, I don't know what, what we talk about, if a pavement replacement should be replaced in kind, you know? Is that what it says?
Oh, yes, sir.
Go, go get your son and, and hey, hey, let him bite away at you. He'll be mad.
Okay.
You got it?
You should accomplish.
Find all the money?
No, it wasn't any money in there, but I- identification paperwork. There was no money in it, but an avenue that could be used to move money out of the system.
Well, you get it all?
I- I hope so. There was a guy out there and he helped. And most of the papers that I took him were still, because it was right inside that door, that wall, the side.
Oh, yeah, I see.
So, uh, he- he picked out a couple of piles of it. And when I sent him over, he, uh, put it in his car and he's going back.
Did he smile at you? Did he smile at you?
No, he's a pissed off head. He said, "I gotta move out of here." And so I said, "But I'm the one that should be moving out to the sanitarium or something."
You gotta be careful. You don't want to throw things out when you're not sure. Sometimes it looks sure, but you should- you should always have a second opinion.
Well, you shouldn't put it in with the recycling and the rest of the junk thing.
Well, maybe you put it in. He did.
No, he did.
Okay, well, you're pretty adamant about that, so I guess he did. Good thing you caught it.
Yeah. And I think maybe it would be wise to call it agency because it's work.
All put some logs down the- the couch?
Yeah.
Better tell them. Hopefully, hopefully that's already employed soon. What moment arrests up?
Good luck.
Yeah.
Is this a regular meeting?
No, it's a special meeting, but they won't allow me to go upstairs because of personnel. I don't know, even though I gave one. Well, no, I don't really care.
You think my signature on your paper will be negative?
Why?
I don't know.
It's already approved. I turned it in pretty hard.
Because, uh...
Are you wanting to tell them? Hmm.
Um...
I turned in 25 signatures.
Somebody else asked me to sign it.
Yeah, because it's not the same- same position.
No.
Yes.
Here.
Yeah.
This is Becky.
Yeah.
McNabb.
Yeah. Let me tell you. Did I tell you about the relationship between- this is like three generations back. Not your- not your dad, but his dad.
His dad. It- it could be. I have no idea who that would be.
Same last name, but it would be the other one who was, so...
What was his name? It didn't- it didn't pop up.
Charlie Burns.
Burns?
Jane.
Hey.
What's going on?
Uh, trouble I've been looking for.
There you go.
Anyway, um, uh, wait just a second. They have, yeah, I've arranged, uh...
Counsel, I'm gonna have you turn your lights green if I could. And, uh, counsel, is there a motion to-
Motion.
Turn from closed session. Motion by McNabb.
Second.
Second by Mulnar. Any discussion? Clerk Tomasic, whenever you're ready, we'll have you call roll.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Uh, to anybody, uh, listening, uh, online or via our broadcast, uh, we've now returned from closed session. Uh, the closed session was requested by City Administrator Blackburn related to his, uh, review. Uh, and so counsel, obviously coming out of closed session, uh, the- the floor is yours for any additional discussion you'd like to have on that topic.
I'm gonna make a motion that we do not extend the probationary period of City Administrator Blackburn, which, uh, ends today, April 21st, 2025.
With that extension, uh, lack of extension, is there any, uh, next steps that you'd like to guide on?
I thought you wanted a second motion for that. Well, I'd like to see that, uh, we give them a 30-day, an additional 30 days on the posi- in the position so that we can find somebody else to replace them.
So we have a motion to not pursue employment beyond the first month, six- six-month probation period with a 30-day notice effective today.
Second.
Is there a second for that motion? A second by McNabb. Counsel, any discussion on that? Clerk Tomasic, whenever you're ready, we will have you call roll.
One second, please. Excuse me.
We can gladly make sure that that motion's clarified if you need any help with the wording. Okay, Schumate? Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Motion carried. Like to just, again, reinforce our thanks and gratitude for your contributions as City of Gibraltar. The next discussion that, uh, we'd like to have, uh, which is according to our agenda, is department head reviews. Um, I want to make sure we could check in on that. Uh, City Administrator Blackburn, obviously, a council had tasked you with the review of department heads. Um, given the transition window coming up, any update you want to provide to council on where that stands? And if it's something that hasn't been initiated yet, we're glad to figure out a path to help, uh, make sure that happens, so any update there?
I have one complete and one more in progress, and it should be done by tomorrow.
Okay, so counsel, I- I would ask, um, just given the, uh, discussion today, uh, that we perhaps pull in at least one council member and I to make sure we have continuity in that review process. So maybe, uh, councils or somebody that would be able to be pulled in offline so that we can help carry through or as needed, reevaluate the ongoing review process there. Anybody want to put their hand up or any direction you want to give counsel on who can make sure that we pull through on that?
I'm- I'm certainly happy to help, uh, there. Um, my- my window right now is- is gonna be a noon lunchtime meeting or, uh, or after five o'clock, so I- I simply don't- don't have the flexibility in my schedule right now to be able to do during weekday daytime.
Okay, so given Councilman Mulnar's, uh, availability, is there somebody else that'd be willing to step up and help me out with, uh, making sure we take a look at where we're at and where we need to go? Not everybody at once.
I, unfortunately, my work schedule depicts that it would have to be after work if- if we were going to pursue that.
So with-
From my side of it.
Since these will probably require daytime involvement, uh, let's go back to the drawing board. Councilman McNabb?
Yes, I- I can step up.
Okay, so, uh, Councilman McNabb and I will, uh, meet with City Administrator Blackburn, um, this week, uh, to make sure we understand current state. We'll come back to council with an update, but we'll make sure we have a path to, uh, make sure we are comfortable with the completion of those reviews according to the resolution from council. So, um, Councilman McNabb, thank you, and, uh, for others that volunteered, uh, thank you, but we'll make sure that that's a daytime availability. So stay tuned on progress there. We'll give an update for you at the 28th meeting so that you know where things are at. Any other questions, topics for department head reviews? All right, uh, that closes out the topics for today's agenda. Uh, so with that, I would like to turn it over to public comments.
Uh, we also need- made a motion, uh, for, uh, posting a position.
Oh, great. Okay, so before we get to public comment, is there another motion on- on the floor for council?
I'd like to make a motion to post the position, uh, for City Administrator.
It's a motion to post by Cox. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mulnar. Any discussion on the posting?
Um, same posting as before.
I think so.
Okay, and should post tomorrow?
Yeah.
Everybody aligned at posting tomorrow using the same, uh, posting that was previously designed? Chair Fonti?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, wh- wh- where are the postings found?
Uh, Katie, can you speak to that?
I- I have the former, um, posting saved on my computer.
I mean, does it go to-
The MML?
Just the MML site?
Yeah, I would post on MML, um, our website and our- our Facebook page.
So is- is there any consideration? Because I've been on the MML site. There's- there's a lot there that are, you know, that are old that, you know, um... So I don't know how much, uh...
It's automatically a 30-day posting, but we typically set a closing date ourselves.
Are there other personnel sites like Indeed or ZipRecruiter or whatever that's current out there that that you might attract people from a different avenue of occupation that might have the attributes you're looking for other than, uh, MML?
Okay.
That'd be a good, different avenue.
Yeah. Okay, great call. So we got the posting, uh, that's already been assembled. Uh, Katie can help us make sure that gets up effective tomorrow, and then we'll go explore other avenues as those mentioned, uh, just diverse the, uh, the casting of the application process. All right.
Uh, okay.
We have a active motion and a second. Discussion, anything further? And if not, Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Motion carried. Um, any further discussion on the, uh, agenda items before we move to public comment?
I- I guess I- I would like to, um, definitely have the conversation, uh, during the course of the week if there is, uh, any opportunity to make the, um... Perhaps make two positions. Uh, what, you know, one city administrative position, maybe a part-time DPW, uh, director position or so- something of that nature to try and split those roles, um, and just comfortable having that conversation in the office throughout the week to see where we go with that. Uh, but I- I don't want us to be in a scenario to where, you know, the only interested applicants are ones that have DPW background, um, and I think that smaller is our pool of- of potential candidates. And so, uh, I don't think we need action here at the meeting for it, um, but something I reiterate, I'd like to sit down and talk with, see if we can develop that ability to, uh, again, broaden the ability to- to get more applicants, but also have a realistic, uh, scope of work, uh, for- for, you know, the next- next folks that we bring in.
Great. I think it's a good discussion we can have, to your point, in exploring and then getting in, uh, any information available for our council meeting on Monday as needed. Any other discussion items in context to today's agenda? All right, uh, we'd like to open up the floor to public comment. Are there any public comments for this evening? We are seeing none in the room, uh, so we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by McNabb, second by Mulnar. Katie will have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.